Good morning, welcome to everyone, thank you for being here, thank you for your interest in the work of this board and thank you for the interest of the work of this district. We'll call the meeting to order and first the invocation, I'll turn it over to Mr. Gilzine.
Yes sir, good morning, at this time I'd like to introduce Rabbi Yosef Kana Koa Khan, the founder and head rabbi of Habbad South Orlando. Rabbi Yosef is an outstanding scholar and published author, Rabbi and his wife reside in South Orlando along with their seven children, Rabbi would you lead us in prayer?
Great Rabbi has taught that it's important to promote charity both in private and in public, so I'll begin first with an act of kindness, give charity before we begin an important meeting. Almighty God, Master of the world, let us recognize the importance of the Central Florida Tourism Oversight District. A government body responsible for protecting and bettering the quality of life for its citizens and businesses. And to raise the economic opportunities for an area visited by people from the entire globe. The Bible says about Abraham, "And he went on his journeys." The Jewish Talmud says, "When he returned from Egypt to the land of Canaan, Abraham went and lodged in the very same inns where he had lodged on his way to Egypt." The Talmud says this teaches you etiquette, that a person should not change his lodgings. This body of government helps make visits to this district comfortable and a reason for visitors to return. The same ancient Jewish Talmud states, "Pray for the welfare of the government, for without it, a man would swallow up his fellow alive." The Jewish ages teach this to mean not necessarily only to avoid one murdering another, but also that governments we need to pray for the spiritual welfare of the government, thereby allowing it to recognize and respect the divinity within man, which keeps people from taking advantage of one another. We pray that we see the importance of fairness and care for each citizen by recognizing each human being as a creation of Almighty God. We gather in prayer for peace all over the world and peace in the land of Israel, which has seen savage massacres last month driven by hatred. Men, women and children murdered, tortured, raped, elders executed, babies decapitated and civilians kidnapped and mutilated. We pray that this government and humans worldwide stand for right over wrong and be brave to speak up and act to defend and protect humans from terrorism and hatred. We pray that recognizing the divinity within humans will not only help us respect and protect them, but also instill peace among us. As the verse states, "Hoseh Shalom b'rimav, he who makes peace on high, may he make peace among us and among Israel." Because even on high, in the heavens, angels have different natures and tasks and missions, how do they get along? Only because he, the Almighty, makes peace, his presence and the awe of him reminds all up on high that although they are different, they're all here on a mission of God and therefore they work in harmony. Bless us that we humans too feel your presence Almighty God and bless us to work together in harmony to serve you and make this region and this world a beautiful friendly and harmonious place. We pray the gracious Father and merciful King bestow your divine blessings upon these members of the Central Florida Tourism Oversight District and allow us to recognize our God given responsibility towards our fellow citizens. Grant us Almighty God that those assembled here be aware of the importance of every human all created in your image. Bless them with good health, wisdom, compassion, good cheer and good fellowship. Hoseh Shalom b'rimav, hu yaseh shalom alenu, valkol yisrael vimru amen. He who maketh peace on high, may he bring peace upon us and upon all of humanity and let us say amen.
Rabbi, thank you very much for your blessings, for sharing your wisdom with us and for those very appropriate words at this time, thank you sir. Mr. Gilzine, I understand you have a treat for us today for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes sir, yes sir I do, so today we have the American Legion Post 286 Honor Guard from Orlando. We are grateful for their presence, it's led by Captain Sergeant Buddy Costin, a retired US Marine. Alongside Captain Costin is a Purple Heart recipient, Robert Amos, who fought in Vietnam. Next we have Nestor Serrana, who served in the United States Army in Kuwait and Afghanistan. Additionally, third class petty officer Les Gilma, who served in the United States Navy. Lastly, we have two sons of American Legions with us, Mr. Mark Bruo, whose father served in the US Army and Duro Brockmeyer, father served in the United States Marine Corps during the Korean War. Captain, the floor is yours.
Please stand.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I hope they can hear me, gentlemen, thank you for your presence and honoring us with your presence and most importantly, thank you for your service to this wonderful country. We could now go over our safety procedures please?
Good morning, thank you Mr. Chairman and members of the board for allowing a moment to share with our visitors safety procedures. I'd like to let everyone know that in the event that an evacuation is necessary, if you're facing the two monitors in the front of the room, the doors to your left will lead to an exit at the rear of the building. The doors to your right will lead to an exit where you entered this morning at the front of the building. Please make your way to the ends of the parking lot and we have employees here in the building that will meet you there and take attendance so that we can make sure that everyone has evacuated properly. If you know of anyone who remained in the building and could not make it out, please let the employees know so that when emergency responders arrive, they can attend to those employees. We do have first aid kits in the building and an AED at the security desk if those become necessary. Otherwise, thank you very much and enjoy the meeting.
Thank you very much, we'll now have public comments. I'll ask everyone, I assume that as you're speaking here, you'll you know what the rules are for public comments. If you don't, we'll remind you and so let's begin with the first, I've got eight public comments or we have eight public comments today. Number one, Mr. Busby, please come up and give us your full name, if you're here in a representative capacity sir, please tell us who you represent.
Good morning Honorable Board and ladies and gentlemen in the crowd, my name is Anthony Busby and I am the current Vice Chair for FayBob Orlando, which is the Florida Association of Veteran Owned Businesses. So today I'd like to start off by thanking the board and everybody in attendance for hearing us today. Again, my name is Tony Busby, owner of Great Florida Insurance of Lake Nona and Hunters Creek, as well as, as I said before, the current Vice Chair for FayBob Orlando. As a small business owner and entrepreneur, I would like to first off thank our friends here at the Central Florida Tourism Oversight District of the Reedy Creek District for providing a unique opportunity for veteran owned businesses and entrepreneurs like myself to apply for contracts and do business within the district. A special thanks to Matthew Oberly and Rocky Hag for making me aware of this program and I truly believe that this program is going to change the lives of many small business owners and entrepreneurs here locally, thank you.
Thank you for your comments sir and you know, the board really has to give Mr. Gilzine credit here. One of the first things that he did is initiate action to make sure that business that's provided by this board and by the district is available to small businesses in Central Florida that simply were not available to them before and that's been a real goal of the boards and we're grateful for Mr. Gilzine and his leadership with respect to that. You know, the old policy was that they didn't have a procurement policy. There was no rules for someone coming forth and being able to bid here and get business from this district. You know, revenues are $200 million a year and our goal would be to share that with some of the local small businesses. And you know, the policy before this board took over was to essentially give business to favored businesses of the largest taxpayer in the district and there's nothing wrong with that. If you're in private business and you decide that you want to do business with a handful of people, that's fine. But as a government agency and an independent government agency, we must function differently. And we must function with a policy that we provide equal opportunity for others. And so we appreciate Mr. Gilzine's leadership on this front and we look forward to spreading the wealth with more small businesses in Central Florida. Next, number two, Mr. Mullen.
Hi, good morning, my name's Lee Mullen with Drummond Carpenter. We're a service disabled veteran owned small business based right here in Orlando. So I'm here representing Chad Drummond, who is our CEO and our service disabled veteran founder, who could not be here unfortunately, but I'm happy to represent him and to speak on this important topic. So Drummond Carpenter, we are an engineering and research firm that was really founded to help our clients address the most challenging and difficult issues surrounding infrastructure, environmental resiliency and sustainability. And our firm's only eight years old and I can tell you how challenging it is to grow in engineering practice in today's competitive industry and market. And I personally would not be here if not for existing programs that support veteran businesses right here in Central Florida, notably Orange County and the city of Orlando, both of which have provided our firm with the opportunity to demonstrate our commitment and our value to addressing these very important projects and doing the important work that'll benefit our communities for the decades to come. So I really want to support and applaud all organizations that provide similar opportunities to veterans and veteran businesses because it's helped us grow our practice, create high paying jobs here locally to fund our own veteran scholarship program and to ultimately give back to the communities that we work within, so thank you.
Sir, thank you for your comments and I know it warms the heart of my fellow board members to have an opportunity to provide opportunities for former veterans and thank you for your service sir. Next, number three, Trish Murphy.
Good morning, thank you for having us, my name is Trish Murphy. I'm born and raised right here in the Orlando area, so this is home for me. I'm an Air Force veteran, mom of four, I'm a business owner and I'm the Chair for the Florida Association of Veteran Owned Businesses, better known as FayBob. We exist to create opportunities for veteran owned businesses to thrive. Our vision is to position Florida as the state of choice for a veteran to own and operate a business. And this week for the first time, this district in 55 years has provided an avenue for veterans to bid and win contracts and serve their community. You see at FayBob, we don't see veterans as a federally protected class, although they are. We see them as a byproduct of the very best trained military in the world. We see them as an underutilized asset for economic impact in our community. We know what they're made of and we know they are well suited for business success and here's why. Veterans know how to lead, we also know how to follow. Veterans have grit, we're not afraid to do the hard work. Veterans show up on time and do what they say they're going to do. Veterans always put the mission first and last but not least, veterans never quit. So today, on behalf of veteran businesses in the area and FayBob, thank you for the opportunity to win your business and blow your socks off.
Ms. Murphy, thank you so much for those very powerful words. And next, number four, Justin Spears.
Good morning esteemed Board, my name is Justin Spears, I'm a proud Navy veteran and I'm representing FayBob this morning. Not only am I a proud Navy veteran, I'm also a serial entrepreneur, I have multiple businesses here in Central Florida. So partnership with FayBob was very welcomed when Trish reached out to me. So what I'd like to do in light of the conversation today is share some insights into veteran owned businesses and the benefits that both the business owners, the businesses and the benefits that both the business owners, the business employees, as well as the partners and the customers can benefit. See, Florida is home to a remarkable 185,000 veteran-owned businesses. It's a large number. But what does that represent? That represents a vast industry. That represents a vast network of resilience and of innovation in our state, really untapped resources for most communities. Notably, these businesses span a variety of industries, um, and they bring a significant impact into Florida's ec- uh, economic landscape. So veterans, we're known for exceptional skills, specific areas such as project management, operations management, logistics, quality assurance, notably, strategy and innovation. That's a big one that we're taught. These skills are honed and we're impl- or we implement them throughout our careers. It's not a one-time thing. It's a lot of repetition. The military continues to send us to schools to build on these. What's the latest and greatest? There's a lot of academics involved to support it as well. So these skills, they translate into tangible benefits for our partners and our customers. Reliability, strategic thinking, problem-solving, and a commitment to excellence. Our partners and customers, they get to experience streamlined services, rapid innovation, organizational efficiency, creating an agile lean and lean environment to conduct business and keep implementing innovation. When you engage with a veteran-owned business, you're not just receiving a service or a product. You're benefiting from a mindset that's focused on meticulous execution. Moreover, supporting these businesses impacts our local economies at all levels. So I encourage you to consider the unique value and perspective veteran-owned businesses bring to this landscape, bring to your initiatives, and we welcome the conversation with our team at FayBob to introduce you to these businesses, to these entrepreneurs, and other key insights that can benefit this district. Thank you for your time and I look forward to collaboration. Appreciate it.
Mr. Spears, thank you for those comments. And you say you're proud to be a veteran. What I tell you from this board, we're proud of you for being a veteran. Thank you.
Thank you. My pleasure.
Next, uh, Ms. Debbie McDonald. Good morning, Debbie.
Good morning. Good morning, board. Um, hello, my name is Debbie McDonald. And what's most difficult about standing before you time after time is that I'm struggling to find the words to describe what I'm seeing. I understand there are concerns about Disney's cultural influence. Whatever you believe, I still adamantly disagree with punishing a private company for their free speech. These grievances should not be settled using this special district as a political platform to fight an unnecessary cultural war. May I remind everyone here that governing a special district is not remotely similar to politics. Governing requires patience, knowledge of the issues, and above all, the wisdom and poise to make good decisions and to be ethical. I can tell you what governing a board is not. It is not manufacturing controversy for headlines. It is not handing out no-bid contracts to your friends. It is not silencing your staff and causing them to leave in droves. This is not an electoral campaign. This is not a school board. This is not a church. This is not a law firm. This is not a special nominating commission for judges. This is not the Federalist Society. This is not the Urban League. This is not a state sanctioned slush fund for charter and private schools. This is a real district with real problems that require your undivided attention. The longer you all govern with only the governor, your political allies and your partner, partisan politics in mind, the more the district suffers, the more Central Florida suffers. May I remind the board that you have a fiduciary responsibility to our community to do what is best for this organization. You have promised to put contracts out for bid, to be transparent, and to be fair. Please put ethics before politics. And to the employees of Reedy Creek, thank you for being the goodness that I have seen in this organization. I've learned the magic is in the people who work here and I'm humbled to met every single one of you that I have. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Um, next, number, uh, s- we're gonna skip six and ask him to speak last because he's a former representative and, and we'll go to seven. And this is, I believe, this, I can't read the, the-
Greg Filak.
Okay. Thank you, sir. If you're here in a represent- please give us your full name and if you're here in a representative capacity, please tell us who you represent, sir.
Yes, sir. Good morning to the board. Uh, my name is Greg Filak. I'm the chairman of the Celebration CDD. Uh, so like you, we are a special purpose district. So if you look to your south, uh, we are the community, uh, just on the other side of I-4, uh, within Celebration. Uh, y- you all surround us on three sides, so you are our neighbors. Uh, we've, uh, our board's been established now for, uh, just going on 30 years. Uh, so we are, to those folks who aren't familiar, we are, we are an unincorporated piece of Osceola County, but we are what would be a town board if we were incorporated. So, uh, we're, like you, we're responsible for, uh, infrastructure, uh, around the, uh, the Celebration community, uh, as, as opposed to our homeowners association, which does, uh, traditional homeowners association, uh, activities. Uh, I just wanted to come in and introduce myself. Uh, again, our staffs have had relationships, I think, over the past 30 years for, you know, anytime we need to do things around our community, uh, because you immediately are adjacent to us, uh, with the conservation areas, uh, some of the, um, uh, water, uh, dispersment agreements that we have, uh, and water control. Uh, those are agreements that we've had existing with your board now for 30 years. Uh, so I just wanted to come and introduce myself. I don't have any business in front of the board, uh, but I think it's best that, uh, as neighbors, we're introducing ourselves before we do have business so that we can build that relationship ahead of time. Um, so I, I've met with Mr. Gilzine a few times and with your vice chair as well. So, uh, appreciate the, uh, the opportunity to come in and certainly Mr. Gilzine's got my contact information if you ever have any questions or comments to, uh, to bring before our board.
Well, thank you very much for your comments and it's always great to meet our neighbors. And as you have probably learned, Mr. Gilzine has an open door policy and his door is open to you or any of our neighbors at any time. But thank you for introducing yourself to the board.
Appreciate it. Good morning.
Uh, next, number eight, Chris Wills. Mr. Wills?
Good morning. Uh, I want to begin by ju- uh, joining in the sentiment that's been expressed across Walt Disney World property in the last couple of days, as well as across our entire nation and saluting all the veterans that, uh, served our nation and are willing to help serve this, uh, district. Um, I wanted to provide you all, uh, some documents. What would be the best way to do that? So, uh, what's being handed out to you right now is our two proposed constitutional amendments. Um, oh, well, I didn't introduce myself properly. My apologies. My name is Chris Wills. I'm here on behalf of Disney Defenders. We are proposing two constitutional amendments. Uh, one to restore Reedy Creek and one to prohibit political retaliation in the state of Florida. Um, and then the final document that's, uh, in the packet that was just provided to you all is a pink slip that we are providing to the board today. Um, it is to put you all on notice that once these petitions get the signatures needed and the will of the voters is expressed in this state, we will restore Reedy Creek and your services will no longer be needed. Uh, as you'll see on the pink slip, it states specifically that the termination is with cause. And we outline every single reason that over this, the short term that you all have served here, it's been chaos and corruption. And so we really need you all to take a look at these documents and I actually invite everybody to sign them at disneydefenders.com, including the board members. Because as has been said, you all have a civic duty to the public to do what's best for this district. And that is in our estimation, and as you see on this pink slip, your resignation. And make sure that we restore Reedy Creek, which kept this area of the state as one of the best-run areas in the entire state, I dare say, in the entire world. Um, I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has, uh, but we certainly hope that you'll take it into consideration and we encourage you guys to take a look at the petitions.
Mr. Wills, thank you very much for your comments and thank you for the material you shared with the board.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have the, uh, pleasure and the privilege of hearing from a former Flor- Florida repres- Florida's, uh, representative, Mr. Smith. Please introduce yourself and, and we're, we're welcome.
Thank you very much, chair members and to people in the audience. My name is Jimmy T. Smith and I am with Concerned Veterans for America. We're a national non-for-profit, nonpartisan organization that works on policy. And I'm a former state representative where I was blessed to be the chair of the Veterans and Military Affairs Subcommittee. That leads into one of the reasons I'm so proud to be here today because veterans in Florida is a growing population. The changes in policies that we did at the state level has allowed Florida to be the number one state for veterans to want to move. And where that relates to what's going on in the state of Florida as far as the growth of business, as you can see by FayBob, is that you have 10% of all small businesses are veterans-owned, even though less than 2% serve. Demographically, you're demonstrating by bringing people to Florida and having opportunities to get jobs and build careers here, the ability for them to fundamentally have a future, which is all veterans want when they come home. It allows for prosperity in the community. And changing policy means giving a thank you more than what you sometimes kind of wonder what you should do for veterans. You know, we, uh, veterans' day just passed and people say, "Thank you for your service." Well, this is a thank you to give the opportunity to change policy locally, following the things that the state has done for years, allows people like members of FayBob and others to have prosperity, to bring their families here. And a unusual thing is Orlando is one of the growing business, veteran business populations that has the lowest amount of active-duty military here. You're drawing them here through the incentive of being good stewards of good policy and showing true appreciation for veterans like you did earlier with the VFW. And we greatly appreciate it. And again, what you have done is an example that from the state to the national level, when they do policy, it really matters most when you give opportunity locally. Thank you.
Representative Smith, thank you very much for your service as an elected official and for your service as a veteran and for continuing to serve the veteran population. That's wonderful.
Thank you very much, sir.
Uh, next, uh, the consent agenda. Are there any comments, questions concerning the sent agenda?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Let the record reflect that the motion passed unanimously. And let's go to the, uh, management reports. Mr. Gilzine.
Testing one, two, three. Testing one, two, three. Great. During our meeting today, we have a few employee recognitions. But first, I want to thank all the veterans here today and those who have served our great nation. I appreciate each one of our veteran-owned businesses and business owners who offered public comments today. We heard, recently heard from former state rep Jimmy Smith, who spoke with us. Uh, Representative Smith, even though he was so kind and gracious not to share his background, but joined the army in 1982 at the age of 17. He served in the Gulf War. He had tours in Japan, Korea, Honduras, Belize, and Panama before retiring. Next, I would like to say thank you to Mr. Trish Murphy, the state chair of the Florida Association for Veteran-owned Businesses. Ms. Murphy is a veteran who served in the United States Air Force, um, as a senior airman. And then also, I want to recognize Mr. Uh, Justin Spears, entrepreneur and also founder of MXI Consulting and former US Navy corpsman. The district administration and board of supervisors have made it a point to deepen our impact within the Central Florida region. Since our new procurement policy was enacted, SIFTOT had saved all taxpayers nearly $3.5 million. Board members, I recently handed you a copy of, uh, of all of the bids and contracts that we were awarded since your new policy. That way you can see the breakdown. And we will actually have this documentation available for the public as well. Um, and what's really exciting about it, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we brought in a, a plethora of new businesses to the district who contracts were awarded roughly over $15 million. And with specifically with the buy-local program, we have over $9 million awarded to local corporations. Additionally, under this administration, we will prioritize procuring goods and materials, uh, from companies and, uh, made here in Florida and also America whenever possible. Next, I'd like to thank Governor Ron DeSantis for recently recognizing our first responders sacrificed by issuing them their annual, uh, year bonus through the Florida Essential First Responder Program. I am happy to announce the checks have arrived. For those who, uh, please contact the fire chief and, uh, to obtain your, your bonus. So, chief. Yeah.
You're about to receive a lot of emails.
Oh, yeah. You're gonna get a lot. Before we move on to acknowledgement, I also want to recognize the veterans one last time. It is estimated among district and RCE staff, there's over 600 years of collective military service. With that said, I just do want to take a second and applaud everyone. All right. So now on to the recognitions. At the district, we incentivize and reward our team members who, um, obtain certifications to advance their abilities and their roles. We want to recognize two of them today. Both of these individuals serve the public with excellence. And with their certifications, I'm confident that they will increase their service to our taxpayers and respective department. First, let's start off with Daniel Balloon. Daniel is our geographical information system administrator tasked with programs to map, analyze, and visualize geographical data in the district. Daniel's being recognized for receiving a certification as a graphic, geographic information systems professional. Congratulations on your achievement. Where is Daniel? Ah, come on over. So, board members, this is when you get up and you do your photos. This is it. This is that time. All right, keep it in the middle.
Sure, sure.
Go hold this. Put you there. Get a couple shots. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Oh, you gotta get Bridget.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Sure.
Yes, sir. All right. Let's see. All right. The second pl- employee I would like to recognize is Ms. Nicole Sip. Nicole is our HR generalist and recently completed her senior professionalism in HR, I'm sorry, human resource certification. Her manager, Michelle, has noted that the senior professional certification is one of the most demanding and grueling certifications to obtain. This is how great Nicole is. She passed it on her very first one try. And achieve, and that's something truly achievable and also incredible. So with that said, uh, we want to thank Nicole. Nicole was unable to be here with today, but thank you, Nicole, for your, your, your commendation. All right. Next, I would like to acknowledge Aaron O'Donnell. Aaron is our public records administrator. Her workload has grown exponentially over the last year, to say the least. Despite the challenge, Aaron has pushed through the immense work and pressure to answer all public records requests with excellence and pride. Thank you, Aaron, for your excellent service. You are greatly appreciated. All right. Now I'd like to recognize Andrew. Where's Andrew? There he is. Andrew. Uh, Andrew Hayes, who recently retired from the district in October after 20 years of service as a firefighter and paramedic throughout the state of Florida. He served both in the central and southern regions. Andrew started as a firefighter down in South Florida, then transferred to the district as a paramedic. The employees here at the district do incredible work day in and day out, and Andrew is an example of how we contribute to the world-class experiences. We appreciate your service and wish you endless enjoyment in years ahead. This is where we pause and we do another photo. So Andrew, come on up for the photo. All right. Photo time. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
You're in the middle.
Yeah, you know. Oh, do you want to come by and take a picture? Come on.
Oh, you guys.
Is that your little?
Hide over there.
Aw.
Do you want one like over there? There you go.
Alright.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Alright. For our next order of business, I would like to discuss the economic impact our recent enacted procurement policy has created and the savings we've brought to all taxpayers. Thanks to the board and my administration, but specifically Timbly Kimball and her team, our new procurement policy has created over fifty million dollars in economic impact. And that is the sheet that you have here. And again, it's available for anyone who wants a copy, since the, uh, enacting of the new policy. Through these new procurement rules, we have set forward our Buy Local Now initiative that prioritize contracting, procuring goods, and services from the central Florida regions and across the state of Florida. The district vision is to bring profound opportunity and prosperity to the region through this initiative. The district procurement team has been listing contracts on the state of Florida's website, MyFloridaMarketplace, and this practice will continue to go forward. Lastly, starting at the end, or beginning of next month, SIFTOD will launch a new website, oversightdistrict.org forward slash buy local now, where we'll host all open bids, ensuring local businesses can view and compete for opportunities. As we wrap up today, I am thankful for every team member and the board for our collective achievements. In these first six months, can you believe it's been six months? Feels longer than that. Wow. We have achieved significant and historic progress for taxpayers and those who visit the district. First, this administration was able to negotiate and approve a A-unit bargaining agreement that was both fair and generous. On your agenda today, the B-unit collective bargaining agreement was negotiated and approved before the current contract expired. This is a first. It's never happened, ever. In addition, we have given non-bargaining employees access to cancer treatment health benefits previously unavailable to them and also offered other enhanced benefits. As district administrator, along with the board, we have lowered the millage rate across the district, reducing revenues roughly thirteen million. Lastly, as we discussed today, we have saved taxpayers millions of dollars through the new procurement policies centered on bringing opportunity to veteran-owned and local businesses. Recently, SIFTOD joined the Osceola Chamber of Commerce, the Florida Veteran, uh, Florida Association of Veteran-Owned Businesses, the African-American Chamber of Commerce of Central Florida, the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce of Metro Orlando, the Lake Nona Regional Chamber, and the St. Cloud Chamber of Commerce. These partnerships will deepen our ability to reinvigorate the local market, spur job creation, and increase economic development in the region. The morale in the central Florida Tourism Oversight District has also increased as my open door policy continues to be utilized by staff members who have met with me directly. Some staff has shared that this was the first time they've actually had a chance to meet with the district administrator and never have been invited. I have met with multiple departments across the district through our coffee and conversation, collecting countless amount of feedback and acting on it as we increase the employees' well-being and work-life balance. Meeting with the fire department in the evening for dinner and on weekends, um, all has further increased morale throughout the district. As a district administrator, I have memorialized Veterans Day as an official SIFTOD holiday starting this year. From my, from now on, our staff will be able to honor veterans with this day off. In addition to Veterans Day, I recently announced that employees will be given an extra day off during the Thanksgiving holiday. Our partnership with Neo City has also benef, has been a hit for our employees. This internship program allowed high school students hands-on experience through summer internships here. Thanks to the communications director, Erica Washington Perry, public records associate Jessica Keller, and also botanist, uh, Danielle Moore for their hard work on the Neo City Summer Internship Initiative. Each one received a thousand-dollar excellent award for their hard work. This program would have not been possible without their incredible, uh, uh, collaboration and our incredible partners with Career Source. We will continue to allow our team members to work with community partners. This is a way of them to give back to the region. As the former head of the Central Florida Urban League, I know how rewarding and enjoyable giving back can be. As district administrator, along with the board, I look forward to answering all the needs of taxpayers in an efficient, timely, and transparent manner. With that, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, that concludes my report.
Mr. Gilzine, thank you for your report and thank you for your very capable leadership. I don't know if there's any other comments from my fellow directors?
Um, Mr. Chair, if I could, just a couple, a couple of quick things.
Yes, sir.
Uh, in lieu, we're, I, we're gonna go through a lot of contract approvals shortly, uh, rather than, uh, I mean, I'll, I may have some brief comments on each of those, but I guess, uh, it just, a, as a global comment, I'd like to thank Mr. Gilzine, uh, for the thoroughness in which he engaged, uh, in, in this, in these, in, in sort of vetting these new, uh, contracts. I think we're, you know, in the spirit of, uh, the new time, the new age in this, in this district. I mean, I think it's exemplified a little bit by our, our new logo. I mean, one, we're, we're looking to operate in greater sunshine. But two, sort of grow deeper, greener roots, uh, rootedness in the local district, uh, and, and establish those connections with folks in the community, whether veteran-owned businesses, uh, or, or others. And I think, uh, Mr. Gilzine's done a great job of that. Uh, I was, uh, appreciative of the time spent with, with him on the phone, uh, discussing a lot of these contracts in pretty significant detail. And Mr. Gilzine, I'd like to thank you, um, for putting up with my, uh, my many, many detailed, uh, questions. You had great answers for all of them. I think we're undoubtedly putting the district in a, in a better place going forward. So thank you for that. Thank you also for acknowledging the Veterans Day holiday. Uh, I, I know you've, your expectations of your team and the work hours that have been put in over the last six months have been significant. And it's good to acknowledge our veterans on Veterans Day, but also acknowledge the, uh, greater sacrifices of all of our team by giving them that, uh, that extra time off. And I also mentioned to you, and I'll mention it publicly, I'd like to all, maybe consider going forward, uh, and not, not that it needs a vote, but maybe consideration of also Columbus Day, uh, when it comes to sort of acknowledge the significance of that day in our country's history as well. So, um, just for, for a future, future thought. Thank you.
Okay, um, let's move on to new business. And I've got a, a comment and a question. First, a question for Mr. Langley. We've got a, a bunch of contracts and from a logistics standpoint, do we vote on each one or do we vote all of them at the end? How do you prefer us to do that?
Well, as it's currently laid out, it's anticipated that each item would have a separate vote. But if the board wants to do all of them at the same time, there's nothing that would prohibit that. Um, these, some of these could have been on the consent. I think the district administrator wanted you all to have the benefit of, uh, presentation on some of these. So, um, if you wait to the end, um, that's fine. If that's the way you want to proceed, of course, you can take them one at a time. I don't know how many have presentations, all of them do. So, there's gonna be, you know, quite a number of presentations today.
So, unless my, any of my fellow board members have an objection, I would propose that we just vote on all of them at the end?
Sounds fine. Uh, Mr. Chair, the, the way I see it is we have, uh, section eight point one, which has a bunch of subsections. And then we have eight point two and eight point three. So, in my mind, we could hear all the eight point ones and then vote on eight point one and then hear all the eight point twos and vote on eight point two. And then eight point three is the collective bargaining for unit B. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Great idea. And, uh, so the, the only comment I might have, and Mr. Langley referred to it, is, is typically for, uh, municipalities or special districts like us, these types of contracts would typically be on a consent agenda. And the, um, individual board members would have discussions with their CEO, Mr. Gilzine. If they have any questions, and if there's no questions, then they all get approved on a consent agenda. And, um, because of the emphasis by this board on transparency, we felt that we wanted to put them on the actual agenda and have the appropriate amount of presentation. But that's not, I want, I want everybody to understand, that doesn't mean that there weren't detailed discussions between Mr. Gilzine and each board member as to each of these contracts. We just want the public to see the business that we're doing and be as transparency, as transparent as we can, particularly with the dollar amounts that are involved here. So with that, um, let's go to the first item on the, on the, which is eight point one. Do you have a, is there a presentation, Mr. Gilzine?
Sir, yes, sir.
Good morning, everyone. Chairman, Board of Supervisors. My name is Craig Sont. I am the Oversight District's Principal Construction Manager. Here today to request the approval of the award of a lump sum fixed fee construction contract, C zero zero six three nine seven Bridge Expansion Joint and Pedestal Repair Project. To provide a little background to this project, district bridges are designed for a hundred-year service life. In an effort to achieve the highest standard of safety for the travel in public, the district, specifically the Planning and Engineering Department, performs bi-annual inspections of all district-owned bridge structures. As a result of recent inspections performed, it was revealed, um, some preventive maintenance items would require attention. Addressing these items will prolong the service life of these bridge structures. There's a total of seven bridges that require attention. These bridges are all located along the BBD corridor. Six of the bridges are located in the vicinity of the Western Way. The other one's located near Bonnet Creek Parkway. The age of these bridges range from twenty to twenty-five years old. Six of the seven bridges require replacement of expansion joints, which is a typical wear item. And four of the same bridges require pedestal repairs to address concrete's falling. An invitation bid was sent out to construction contractors, which were pre-qualified in bridge construction by the Florida Department of Transportation. The district received three bid proposals. Based on receiving proposals, SEMA Construction Incorporated provided the lowest, most responsive bid in the amount of seven hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars. Funding for this project is derived from the district's Planning and Engineering Department's fiscal year two thousand twenty-four planned work budget. In conclusion, uh, district staff request the approval of the award of the contract, C zero zero six three nine seven Bridge Expansion Joint and Pedestal Repair Project to SEMA Construction Incorporated in the amount of seven hundred and fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning. My name is Catherine Lito. I am the manager of Planning and Engineering for the district. And I have the next two items, eight point one B and C. Both are related to Lynx Bus Services. So, the first item, eight point one B, is to maintain existing services. And eight point one C is to provide a change of increasing a new route. Thank you. Okay, so as you may be aware, Lynx is a standalone government unit providing fixed bus routes to the district, allowing mobility service for both guests, visitors, and employees alike, traveling to and from the district from various areas outside of the district from Orange and Osceola Counties. The district currently provides portions of the funding for three existing bus routes. Should we go to the next page? The first of which is Link fifty-six. This originates in Osceola County and comes on to district property. It operates three hundred sixty-five days a year, including holidays, at thirty-minute frequencies. The next link is three oh six. This also originates in Osceola County down in Point Sienna. Again, is three hundred sixty-five days a year and has a morning and evening pickup-drop-off service. And our final route is Link three fifty. This originates in Orange County at the downtown Link Central Station, coming on to property, again, three hundred sixty-five days a year, thirty-minute frequencies. On September twenty-eighth, the Lynx Board of Directors voted to do the funding approval for this agreement. It will be our contract, C zero zero sixty-four sixty-five. The total amount for maintaining our existing three routes is five hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, nine hundred and fifty-three, sorry. And it will be split into equal payments over the fiscal year. This service is provided in our fiscal twenty-four budget. In addition to maintaining our existing services, we also looked at the possibility of Lynx adding a new route. This route is currently provided today by the district, but is provided through a private vendor bus service. So we looked at the opportunity to work with Lynx and partner to add that route to Lynx services, and it will provide a cost savings for the district to do so while maintaining that existing service. If you go to the next slide, this new route will be Link three oh seven, and it provides drop-offs to the following four locations, primarily hooking into the Disney Springs Transfer Station as the main hub of connection. It also will be provided for three hundred and sixty-five day service at thirty-minute frequency. As mentioned, doing this transition provides a cost savings to the district while maintaining an existing service. And Lynx Board of Directors did approve this service change on their end. And so today I have before you, um, presenting both of these options for your approval. With your approval, we would anticipate this new route service would start in December, December tenth. Adding this new route, the amendment total is six hundred and three thousand, nine, the three dollars. And that would bring the total Lynx agreement to one million, one hundred and forty-five thousand, forty-six dollars, which would be split into equal payments over this fiscal year, all of which is included within our budget for the year. With that, are there any questions?
Any questions?
Alrighty, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Next.
Good morning. I'm Mike Rikus, and I'm here to talk to you today about district-wide roadside litter control. As you know, we have a beautiful area here with guests from all over the world, and the last thing they want to do is come out and see trash. So as such, the district has a very robust trash pickup program. The program runs seven days a week, six AM to ten PM, every day covering the entire district-owned roadway system. That covers about four hundred and sixty-seven center lane miles and forty-eight specific roadway segments that we have teams out daily, all day long, picking up trash, cleaning it up. In the case of an emergency where somebody reports trash to us, we have direct connection to the company, and we call them directly and say, "Hey, we've got some issues. Can you go pick it up?" That way, when you drive through, hopefully, you don't see any trash anywhere. In addition, we also, uh, clean up around all of our stormwater ponds and our water facilities, which of course is great for the environment, helps us with our stormwater permit to show that we're reducing load into the permit. We had six bids come in. Our lowest bid was King Services, who happens to be the current provider. We also, as this is a current provider, I will also point out that this contract came in about fifty-five thousand dollars less than last year's contract. So the bidding process and having so many bidders certainly helped the district save money and saves the taxpayers' money through this process. And I believe that's about what I've got. Uh, we're collecting about seven hundred pounds or so a month on average of trash, which may not sound like a lot, but when you add up little slips of paper, that's a lot of, that's a lot of trash being picked up, which again, keeps it from going into the environment, also keeps the place clean, looking better. So hopefully you guys will, uh, approve this contract today, and we can keep picking up that trash.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair, I did have a couple of questions. Mike, thank you very much for the presentation. Um, it's something that I've certainly taken, um, an extra notice of, uh, since being appointed to the board and making sure that, that the aesthetics and the environment and the beauty of this district is preserved and, uh, maintained in, in a manner that it should be. Um, so first, uh, I just wanted to ask, you know, since there's a, uh, the bid came in at a lower number, we're not expecting any lower level of service.
It is the same scope as, as previous. It has unchanged scope, so it will be the same service you've always seen.
Very good. And we're happy with the current vendor and the service.
Yes, they do a great job, and we have great communication. Jessie, our project manager is here, and she has a direct line to the company's owner, and they converse back and forth anytime trash is noticed or there's an issue.
Very good, and could you just let everybody know, if we see litter within the district, who do we call? How do we report it?
Well, I guess, I guess you can, you can call Jessie, but that'll make her phone very, very busy. Do, do not call nine one one if you see litter. You can call any of us here in the district office, and we can take that message.
The main, the main district one?
Sure.
Okay, alright, thank you, that's good to know, I appreciate it.
You see something, say something.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to thank Mike and your team. I think, uh, I'm glad the supervisor mentioned this. There is that concern that there would be a change in the level of service because it is world-class. And again, I would be remiss if I didn't highlight that it is the people behind it that has been why it's that way and will continue to be that way. So thank you for everything you do.
Thank you. The team gets all the credit, they've taken care of this.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mike, for your report.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And I'll be, uh, here for one more, which is parking garage operations. And I'm here to ask the board to approve a contract to continue our operations at the parking garage. As you know, we have three parking garages, and we staff those through a contract agency, and they provide various guest services. They maintain, monitor the mon, the, uh, elevators, the escalators, help guests in and out of traffic situations, help them find their car when they can't, direct them to different places, help keep the garages clean. They've got a, a lot of things going on at the parking garage, and we have a great team out there doing it. They work every day of the year. It's our most guest-facing operation that we have. This is direct contact with the visitors coming into the district. And, um, they work eight-thirty till midnight every day of the year, um, and get pretty busy, particularly around the holidays, which are coming up. So we, uh, sent out the com, the contract for bid, and we had four bidders. Uh, we have a new bidder that won this bid, and compared to the exact same contract for last year, it's over one point two eight nine million dollars saved compared to last year's, the, the previous contract, which is a three-year contract. So that is, the bid process is a significant savings, again, for the district and for the taxpayers. And it is a three-year contract. Any questions about the parking garages?
Any questions?
I guess litter's more fun, huh? Okay. Alright, thank you very much.
Mike, thanks for your report, appreciate it. Next.
Good morning, Board Chair and Board of Supervisors. I'm Tanya Naylor. Um, I am the Director of Security and Emergency Management for the district. I am here, um, to present this agenda item for a three-year contract to provide security services at the administration building, as well as the parking garages, um, to ensure the safety of our guests and our employees there. The services are formal, were formally advert, advertised for bids, uh, with a total of four bidders submitting proposals. The lowest responsible bidder was Fidelity Security Agency, who sub, um, who is a bi-local vendor for us. With this bid, we have saved a total of seven hundred and fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars over the prior contract, which was a three-year contract. Uh, so I'm requesting your approval today for this contract.
Any questions? Hearing none, thank you for that report, Tanya. Good work.
Good morning, Board Chair and Board Supervisors and Administrator Gilzine. All? Am I not up? One more? I'll introduce myself out. My fault, I thought I was up.
Good morning. Uh, Board Supervisor and Board Members, my name is Eric Ferrari. I'm the Acting Fire Chief, and I'm here to, uh, present this agenda item for a request for a three-year contract with Motorola Solutions, contract zero zero six four eight nine. Uh, this will be for the maintenance, repair, and replacement of equipment, as well as security monitoring for the district's, uh, two-way radio system. Uh, we own a comprehensive radio system at the district that public safety, public works, and security operations operate on, uh, in the garage. Uh, and we also conjoin our system with Orange, Orange County, and the City of Orlando, and subsequently Apopka for a major, uh, system-wide connection. Um, the, this contract will provide, uh, infrastructure security, preventative maintenance, security monitoring, especially in this day of cyber attacks and cybersecurity issues. Uh, and this contract will be awarded to Motorola Solutions. It's a proprietary system, uh, they are tech, they're really the only vendor that could connect to the system and monitor it and provide maintenance and support to it. And I'm available to answer questions should you have them.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair, just wanted, uh, Chief, thank you, you just mentioned it, but, uh, I'm familiar with this, uh, problem in other jurisdictions, uh, particularly, you know, high, uh, population areas where one department's, uh, radios can't communicate with the sheriff or somebody else. You just mentioned that ours are capable of communicating with Orange County, Orlando. Um, how about Osceola County? Is there anybody that you work with that this doesn't necessarily, uh, compute with? And if so, how do we address that going forward?
Uh, that's a great question, thank you for that. So Osceola County, our systems are not conjoined, however, we do have channels that we can mutually communicate on down in our, uh, portion of the district that covers Osceola County. The lion's share of our district is in Orange County, uh, protected by Orange County Sheriff's Office, and we work a lot with them on scenes. Uh, so that part of the system, all the way down through Orlando and Apopka, uh, functions much like a cell phone roaming on to T-Mobile, AT&amp;T, and all the carriers that are seamless to the user. We have that experience with Orange County and Orlando, that seamless experience. However, we can switch over and communicate directly with the Osceola County Sheriff's Office, uh, should we need to communicate with them at the Y-Wolves Sports and different portions of the district that are in Osceola County.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for your report, Chief. Next.
My apologies, I just couldn't wait to introduce myself to you all. Uh, good morning, Board Chairman, Board Supervisors, and Administrator Gilzine. I am Jason Herrick, the Manager of the Gas, Water, and Waste Resources Division at Reedy Creek Energy Services. And in that role, I am responsible for several district utility operations, including potable water, reclaimed water, wastewater, solid waste, and natural gas. And I'm here today to request board approval on six different contracts, all of which were recently competitively bid, and all of which I am requesting award to the low-responsive and responsible bidder. These requests are for routine business. The first two requests related to our solid waste, uh, operations. Specifically, these contracts are for the disposal and transportation of Class One waste. Class One waste is essentially the, uh, waste that you throw away at home that ends up in a landfill. Today, we are operating with one contract for both services, transportation and disposal, and the waste is going to the JED landfill in Hollipah. For this latest solicitation, it turned out to be better financially to award the services separately. We're currently paying forty-eight dollars and seventy-one cents per ton for the combined services. And with this new solicitation, the cost will be forty-five dollars and ninety-five, ninety-seven cents per ton, a reduction of two dollars and seventy-four cents per ton, or roughly two hundred thousand dollars per year. So starting with Class One disposal, uh, the district customers produce about seventy-five thousand tons of waste each year, Class One waste. That waste is collected by Reedy Creek Energy Services personnel and brought to, uh, the district transfer station located in the South Service Area of the district. An outside vendor then transports the waste to the landfill for disposal. On April twentieth of this year, we bid out the transportation and disposal of Class One waste. We bid it out so that bidders could bid on both services or could bid on either service separately. We received three bids, and the results were, were clear, that it would be advantageous to award two separate contracts. So for the disposal services, we are requesting to award a contract to the low-responsive and responsible bidder, ACMS Harts of Florida Landfill in Sumter County, Florida, for a five-year contract, in the total amount of ten million, thirty, thirty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. And that's the first of my six items. The second item, uh, is the, uh, transportation of Class One. And that, uh, currently is transported to the JED landfill by a company called Walpool Incorporated as a subcontractor to JED landfill. We received three bids for transportation, and we are requesting to award a contract to the low-responsive and responsible bidder, happens to also be Walpool Incorporated, for a five-year contract in the total amount of nine, uh, excuse me, seven million, nine hundred, seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. My next contract is, uh, related largely to the solid waste operation as well. Uh, RCS maintains and operates a fleet of forty diesel vehicles for the solid waste operation. These vehicles, uh, move approximately a hundred and thirty thousand tons of waste each year, and they need to be refueled every night. We also operate and maintain sixty-two district-owned emergency generators, which support backup power for lift stations, pump stations, wells, and operations buildings throughout the district. These generators require fueling twice per year. Additionally, operations requires the delivery of hydraulic fluid and motor oil bulk orders on occasion. An outside vendor provides these fueling services, and the existing contract was expiring, so we went out to bid. And we went out to bid on a per gallon unit price basis and received two bids. After reviewing the bids, we asked for best and final pricing based on a markup of the Oil Price Information Services Index, OPIS. Then we compared the results of the two methodologies. We are requesting to award a contract to the low-responsive and responsible bidder Lynch, uh, Fuel Company for a three-year contract in the total amount of three million, four hundred twenty-five thousand, four hundred eighty-six dollars and fifty-two cents, using the markup to the OPIS methodology. The markup is, for the low bidders, twenty-eight cents on top of that index, which is what we're paying in the current contract. The next two requests are related to the wastewater operation. The district-owned wastewater plant treats over four billion gallons of wastewater annually, employing multiple treatment processes that require chemical addition, such as chlorine and ferrous sulfate and polymer. Uh, this request is for the purchase of polymer. Two types of polymer are used at the wastewater plant at two different locations in the treatment process to lower water content in our biosolids. On September seventh, we bid out the supply of polymer and received four bids. We're requesting to award a contract to the low-responsive and responsible bidder, Polidyne Incorporated, for a two-year contract in the total amount of eight hundred forty-five thousand, six hundred eighty dollars and fifty cents. Also, on September seventh, we bid out the purchase of ferrous sulfate. Ferrous sulfate is added to the biological nutrient removal process to assist with phosphorus removal, which is required to maintain compliance with our operating permit, FDPE, uh, operating permit. We bid out the supply of ferrous sulfate and received two bids. Uh, we're requesting to award to the low-responsive and responsible bidder, Camaro Water Solutions for a two-year contract, in the total amount of nine hundred thirty-nine thousand, six hundred sixty-seven dollars and seventy-three cents. And the last item, uh, for me this morning, um, is related to our solid waste operation as well, back to solid waste. The district currently owns two hundred and eighty-eight compactors and cardboard balers that are deployed throughout its service area. These assets are utilized three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And of the hundred and thirty thousand tons of waste processed by the solid waste division each year, about half of it goes through, uh, these compactors and balers. Each asset requires biannual maintenance. Additionally, when these assets break or fail, they have to be fixed as well. So on September eighteenth, the, the maintenance contract for this work was competitively bid, and five bids were received. We're requesting award to the low-responsive and responsible bidder, PTR Baylor and Compactor Company, for a three-year contract in the total amount of one million, one hundred forty-two thousand, two hundred fifty-three dollars. That was a lot, really fast.
Good, good job. Any, any questions?
Mr. Chair, I've got, I've got one question regarding, uh, item, uh, eight one J, uh, the Tank Wagon Fueling Services. Uh, you mentioned that we now, we've taught, we're tying our pricing going forward, and it's going to float based on sort of market pricing. Uh, we, we, it sounds like, I, I guess I'd like to hear, I mean, you, you must have concluded that the savings, taking on that sort of floating risk, obviously, market conditions can change, a lot of uncertainty in the Middle East and so forth. Uh, to talk to me a little bit, maybe you can expand on the logic, the savings versus the, the fixed fee.
Yes, can we go back to that item on the screen, please? Yeah, just, yeah, that one, yep, just go, keep one more, one more. And one more, let's see if we had it in there, no, we didn't have it in there. So we bid it out originally on the, um, unit price basis, per gallon. And we have an estimate, we know how many gallons we use every year for both the, uh, the trucks, the vehicles, and the, um, and the generators. So we were able to use that to come up with an estimate for our annual amount. We also were able to use that same methodology using the, um, uh, the add-on to the OPIS index. And when we did that, using the same, uh, gallons, it was, it was clearly beneficial. It wasn't close in terms of the dollar amount. I don't have that exact number in front of me, uh, but... Is it a slide back? Did that, did that have both of them on there? That didn't? Yeah, okay, it was, it was significant, seven hundred and ninety-three, seven hundred and ninety-four thousand savings, doing it that way.
Well, that's obviously, yeah, pretty significant, and I mean, obviously, there's a little risk baked in there, but it sounds like, uh, it's one worth taking, given that potential savings, so.
Yeah, I think it's a shared risk between the contractor and ourselves.
Right.
Any other questions?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, um, we didn't have any questions on eight point one A, um, and I do have a question with regards to the pedestal repairs. Okay, um, so...
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, now, I, if I heard you correctly, you said that they're twenty-five-year-olds?
Twenty to twenty-five years.
Twenty to twenty-five.
Each bridge has a different age, but that's the age range.
Alright, so having spalling issues after twenty to twenty-five years seems a little soon.
It, it all depends, it depends on many different situations, too. The majority of these bridges in that corridor are kind of skewed, at a skewed, meaning whatever the bridge is crossing, it's kind of at a little bit of an angle, which...
Yeah.
Which doesn't disperse the load as, as well as being ninety degrees to it. Uh, the concrete spalling, um, something you want to address with the concrete spalling, um, if the spalling happens to, um, happens to, um, have steel showing in it, too. You run the risk of that steel, um, corroding, which would cause further spalling on it, you know, um, so that's why we like to, we like to, it's preventing the maintenance for the most part, too.
No, no, I understand, is this a situation where the rebar is exposed?
In some places, minor, yes, yes, but it's not necessarily on, on the full load-bearing, um, of the pedestal. Pedestals are pretty large, too, and the, and the bridge beams sit on it. Pedestals are part of the bridge substructure, which is the foundation. Um, the superstructure of the bridge sits on top of that foundation, so it's always wearing on that surface, too. Um, and the majority of them are small, minor spalling, too, but you want to address it because it could lead to more problems down in the future, so. Yep, yep.
New cuts, extra weak? Or, you know, marine, or, um, you know, carbon fiber, or...
It depends on the situation, too. It just so happens there's a lot of corrosive waters around here through the district, too, so it really depends on where the bridge is or where, um, what body of water it's crossing. Some don't, don't cross any body of water, too, so it depends on the certain situation is how they're built with corrosive, uh, anti-corrosive materials, too. But typically, the, um, in the newer bridges, a lot of the, um, a lot of the rebar is coated in there, too. But as you know, if you just have a little piece of, of, uh, concrete chip off, and it could be just two inches on the pedestal, you expose a little bit of that steel, and you could end up with issues in the future from corrosion, too. As we all know, the corrosion gets in the metal, metal expands, causes more cracking, so that's what we're trying to avoid here, so. Uh, every bridge can, can propose, it just happens, the BBD corridor, we've replaced a lot of bridges over the last ten years around property, too, uh, doing our roadway expansions. Um, these bridges on the, on the BBD corridor really haven't been, uh, addressed or affected by the, the new ones, too. And, um, that's where we're having some of the issues, too. Like I said, we have biannual inspections, so we're always up on, uh, inspecting those bridges for any kind of potential wear items or, uh, associated items that need to be addressed. So we like to be proactive in doing that, too, and this is a part of being proactive with the wear.
Thank you very much, this gives me a great deal of comfort driving over those bridges now.
Not a problem.
I mean, I didn't have any pause for concern before, but I wanted to check on that.
Not a problem.
But, uh, at this point, thank you very much.
You're very welcome, thank you. Anybody else?
No, thank you, sir. I think that, any other questions? I think we've now gone through all the items listed as eight point one in pursuit to Supervisor Ock's suggestion.
I think it's a time for a motion, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve agenda items eight-point-one A through eight-point-one M.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Let the record reflect the motion passed unanimously. Let's go to eight-point-two items.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, my name is Anthony Casper, and I lead the Engineering and Programs Division for EDP Energy Services. Uh, this morning, I am here to present on a capital improvement project known as the Epcot Low-Temperature Hot Water Distribution System Renewal Project. Short name. Uh, this is a project to replace approximately one thousand four hundred feet of twenty-four-inch diameter low-temperature hot water supply and return piping to bypass a section that's failed. Uh, in addition to restoring capacity, the alignment of the proposed piping will also improve operational flexibility and resiliency of the system. Uh, but before getting too far into the, uh, project details, I'd like to provide a, a brief overview of the district's low-temperature hot water system at Epcot. Stay right there, back. Cool, thank you. Uh, at the heart of the system is the Central Energy Plant located on Backstage Lane, where there are three hot water boilers with a total output capacity of approximately eighty-one million BTUs of heat energy. Uh, these are used to continuously heat the approximately three hundred thousand gallons of water in the distribution system to maintain a steady supply temperature of approximately two hundred degrees Fahrenheit. Uh, the two hundred-degree water flows out from the plant into the district's distribution system, where customers extract heat for a variety of purposes, like, uh, heating and humidity control for both guests and backstage areas. Like the circulatory system in your body, the distribution system is a closed-loop system. The supply lines are the arteries that distribute hot water out to the customers, and the return pipelines are the veins that carry the cooler water back to the plant to be reheated. Uh, in total, the district has approximately fifty thousand feet of supply and return piping that wraps around the perimeter of the park, uh, with one connecting segment in the middle to form a figure eight. As you can see, the red, or pink line on the diagram. Uh, the original nineteen eighty-two piping configuration used throughout the distribution system is somewhat unique, uh, in that it consists of a carrier pipe inside a casing pipe, separated by a layer of insulation and an air jacket. Uh, it is also equipped with a cathodic protection system to help mitigate corrosion. Uh, this makes for a very energy-efficient and durable system. However, uh, it is, while it's a robust configuration, uh, unfortunately, its uniqueness, uh, also makes it challenging to work with when there is a failure. Uh, and that was the case, uh, here in April two thousand twenty-one. A significant leak developed in the twenty-four-inch return pipeline just south of the energy plant. Uh, as I mentioned, it's a closed-loop system, so any leak needs to be compensated for with makeup water, uh, at the plant. Uh, however, if the leak is bad enough that it cannot be compensated for, then operation of the entire plant and system can be at risk. Uh, that was the case in April of two thousand twenty-one. Uh, when this particular leak developed, uh, the rate of makeup water spiked to over fifty thousand gallons a day. Uh, for reference, in a brand-new, perfect system, uh, the makeup rate would theoretically be zero gallons per day. And, uh, in our current system, uh, at its age and condition, the average makeup rate, aside from this leak, was around twenty thousand gallons per day. Uh, to protect the integrity of the plant, the segment, uh, was isolated and removed from service. Uh, water was still able to return to the plant through the other leg of the figure eight, uh, but that mode of operation significantly restricts the capacity of the system. After exploring several options to try and pinpoint the exact location of the leak so that it could be repaired, it was determined that the most, uh, efficient and cost-effective solution was to replace the forty-year-old segment in a new alignment. The new alignment, uh, shown in green there, uh, not only restores the lost capacity, but also, uh, improves system resiliency. Uh, this is because we are adding a second connection between the plant and the figure eight of the distribution system. If you look at the, the, uh, pink line on the top of the picture on the right, uh, that is the one and only current connection between the energy plant and the figure eight of the distribution. So by adding the green segment as a secondary connection, that provides us with some additional, uh, flexibility in case there is ever any issues on that pink segment. In, uh, August of, uh, two thousand twenty-two, a professional services agreement was executed to prepare a design, uh, package. Uh, the design includes a new piping configuration that does not require an outer casing pipe, uh, making future work on the segment much easier. Uh, the design package was included in an, in an invitation to bid that went out to four qualified contractors in May of two thousand twenty-three. Bids were submitted by three of the contractors, with the fourth declining to bid due to a lack of available resources to meet the project's schedule. And the items that, uh, we are seeking approval for today, A, B, and C, uh, first and foremost, are establishment of a total project budget of twelve million dollars. Uh, this project will be funded from an existing bond issuance, uh, known as the Series two thousand twenty-one dash two Utility Revenue Bonds. The second item, B, is approval of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars from that budget for design and support services, including construction, engineering, inspection services, uh, weld inspections, asbestos abatement, uh, services, and soil density testing. And the third item, C, is approval of the contract to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, uh, for a value of nine million, three hundred sixty-one thousand, eight hundred forty-three dollars. Uh, with that, I am available for any questions on any of those items.
Any questions? Well, thank you for your report, sir.
Thank you.
And, um, so is there a motion that we approve, items eight-point-two, A, B, and C?
Same move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Let the record reflect, the motion passes unanimously. Um, before we go to public hearings, just a brief comment, it's, uh, it's really music to the. I was having trouble working my computer.
Oh, yeah?
Yep.
Oh, yeah, it wasn't on my sheet, okay, I'm sorry. Huh? Chief? Come forward, sir.
Good morning again, good morning again, Board Supervisor and, uh, Board, Board Chair. Uh, on the agenda there is the Collective Bargaining Agreement B Unit, which would take effect January one of twenty-four. This unit, it represents, uh, local twenty-one-seventeen supervisory team, which would include the captain and battalion chief rank in the fire department. They have direct oversight of the day-to-day operation throughout the district of the firefighters, paramedics, inspectors, and nine-one-one dispatchers. It's a much smaller group compared to the A Unit that represents all the firefighters and medics and inspectors. Uh, I don't remember the exact number, about twenty in, in the group. Uh, we spent many hours in this room with Susan, Ms. Paula Hoysington, our legal counsel, uh, myself, uh, negotiating this agreement with, um, the local twenty-one-seventeen negotiating team. Uh, that I must commend, they came very well-prepared for the meetings. Uh, they ran very smoothly, uh, it's the first time ever, especially, I, I know in my tenure, and as far back as we could check, that we've reached an agreement prior to the expiration of an agreement. I know that, uh, brings, brings great comfort to the supervisory personnel that know that come the start of the new agreement, they'll get their merit increases and things will progress as normal, there'll be, uh, no time or no gap where we do not have an agreement. Uh, and so, there were some financial changes, uh, that Susan Higginbotham negotiated with the team, some operational changes that I negotiated with the team, specifically about leave-of-absence article that governs how long, uh, this B Unit personnel can be out on leave, with check-in points, and, uh, ensuring they come back to work in a timely manner. And also in Article twenty-two vacancies and promotions that give the district and the department the opportunity to, uh, also solicit input or, or applicants from the outside of the organization to compete also against internal applicants should we see the need. Uh, and that really summarizes the, uh, a lot of work in a short amount of time. And I'm happy to answer questions if you should have them.
Any questions? Well, Chief, thank you for your report, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there a motion on this item?
Move to approve agenda item eight-point-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Let the record reflect, the motion passes unanimously. And so, uh, what I was gonna say is, um, uh, it's, it's music to the ears of this board to see that the procurement process is resulting in savings. And, uh, thank you for your leadership on that, Mr. Gilzine, and it's also wonderful to see that there's new vendors that are having opportunities to do work for the district. That was the whole objective, and now we see the fruits from that effort, and so we're grateful for that. Next, let's go to public hearings. Resolution six-fifty-six, Mr. Langley.
Resolution number six-fifty-six, a resolution of the Board of Supervisors of the Central Florida Tourism Oversight District adopting the amended Building and Safety Department fee schedule, adopting and amending building permits, plan reviews, plan revision, state of Florida surcharge fees, temporary structures, manufactured buildings, and trailers, building relocations, elevator, escalator, material and dub meter permits, certificate of operation fees, annual registered attraction inspection fees, structured demolition, service call, technician response, alternative materials and methods requests, temporary certificate of occupancy, certificate of occupancy, contractor registration, investigation fees, special equipment, reinspection fee, change of contractor fee, renewed expired permit fee, and other fees, providing for severability conflicts in an effective date.
This is a public hearing, I believe we have a presentation.
Yes, sir, is there public comment?
Uh, I.
Presentation, sir, okay.
Uh, my name's Kenny Locke, I am the Chief Technical Inspector for the District's Building Department, and I also serve as the interim manager of the department currently. This proposed resolution increases our fees approximately thirty percent year-over-year. And that is a direct result of the budgeting process that we went through this past year, where we were asked to cover more of our expenses than we had in previous years. So, the only way that we can do that is through these fees. Our last fee increase was in twenty sixteen, I believe, and it was also about a thirty percent increase at that point in time. When we did the evaluations, we followed the same process and procedure that we did back in twenty sixteen, and we evaluated and compared our fee structure against multiple other jurisdictions throughout the state to make sure that we were running in parallel to what fees that they assess. There is no one standardized methodology that's assigned to any building department for how they generate their fees. So we had to look at a variety to see what was comparable and appropriate for our district. If you have any other questions.
Any questions?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Chair, Mr. Locke, thank you for your presentation, I appreciate your service to the district and, and especially in your role as the interim director.
Thank you.
Well, um, this is an area that's of interest to me, because I deal with building permitting every day.
Yes, sir.
I'm kept clients and developers. And I saw that we had some comparables listed in the agenda item Orange County, Osceola County, Miami-Dade, Canton City, Tallahassee. Just generally, what we're proposing today, is that consistent or comparable with what these other jurisdictions are, are seeing?
Yes, sir, and we, and we had to go through, as a matter of fact, if you don't mind, uh, I think we have a slide for that? We don't, it's not in the, we don't have a slide, okay, I apologize, I thought we had a slide in there for that. Um, but yes, we did have to go across and look at multiple jurisdictions, because some of the fees that we assess, other jurisdictions don't. And we had to find jurisdictions who had similar, uh, charges, if you will, to see where we were apples and apples. And in most cases, we are below the maximum that we can find, Hillsborough County tends to be the highest that we saw. Uh, but we are on par with jurisdictions like Tallahassee and other places that when you look at the overall equivalent population, because we don't actually have a population here, but on any given day, you could have two hundred, three hundred thousand people on property. That's about the equivalent of Gainesville or Tallahassee, and our fees are in those same ballparks for those areas.
Right, and in my, you know, my view, a permit fee and application fee should be commensurate to what it actually costs the government to do the work that the permit or the application is requiring the, the staff to do. So, just want to make sure, is that what this is based on? It's based on the actual cost to the district, to your department, to process these permits, to do the inspections, to issue the permits, to, you know, reply comments and back and forth with that kind of stuff?
Yes, sir, that, that is, there's no surplus in this.
Okay, perfect. Uh, and then the other thing is that, you know, our, our taxpayers should get what they pay for. So I know that our district, uh, goes out of its way to do inspections on the weekends, night, a lot of unique inspections that, uh, other jurisdictions don't have to do, like when you're, um, inspect, inspecting lighting and things like that, and, and these unique attractions. So I just want to make sure that, you know, I want, I want Disney to get their permits as quickly as possible. And I don't want there to be any delay in that, and, uh, if they're paying more, we should make sure that our service is at least as good as it's, as it's always been. Uh, so if you need anything in, in, in that realm, uh, for your department, please talk to Mr. Gilzine. Uh, because like I said, this is, you know, one of the very first things I asked the first time I stepped in this room was about building permitting. Um, and, uh, it's, it's important to me to make sure that we have a, the, the highest level of service for, for our taxpayers here.
Yes, sir, I understand, and if I could just have a moment to state that our performance measures that we in place on ourself, they're not statutory, they're, our performance measures are the most aggressive that I've ever seen in any of the building department, and the staff that we have that executes plan reviews and inspections is unparalleled. Uh, I would put them against anybody that you would care to mention in the state, in the country, even in the world. Uh, the level of expertise and professionalism is unmatched.
Excellent, I thank you so much, appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you, is there any other questions, uh, fellow board members?
Well, uh, Supervisor Ong's beat me to it, so thank you. Uh, it's, I share his interest and concern in the topic, obviously, fundamentally, I'm, uh, a little bit, always a little nervous about raising fees, but, uh, a, a hundred percent. Uh, I, I want to make sure they're justified, uh, and I think our department, your department is well-known and well-regarded throughout the state, throughout the country, for very good reasons. As long as you continue to maintain that high-level responsiveness, it's reasonable for us to expect, uh, uh, those costs are gonna go up over time. Uh, certainly since twenty sixteen, I don't need to tell anybody in this room what, you know, what the costs, uh, so just the basic inflation to keep up to thirty percent, thirty percent increase might just be an, an inflation adjustment for that period of time. So I think that's quite reasonable, uh, under the circumstances. So, uh, with that, I am, I'm supportive and, and thank you for your, your inquiry on this.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, sir, for your report, um, and I guess we need to ask if there's any public comments, Mr. Langley? Are there any public comments? Uh, hearing none, is there a motion?
Also a motion.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, indicate by, indicating aye.
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 Let the record reflect, the motion passes unanimously. Uh, next, resolution six-fifty-seven, Mr. Langley.
Resolution number six-fifty-seven, a resolution of the Board of Supervisors of the Central Florida Tourism Oversight District updating reference codes and standards within the Epcot Compilation Codes two thousand eighteen edition, and incorporating references into the two thousand eighteen Epcot Building Code, two thousand eighteen Epcot Electrical Code, two thousand eighteen Epcot Fuel Gas Code, two thousand eighteen Epcot Mechanical Code, and two thousand eighteen Epcot Plumbing Code as enforced within the Central Florida Tourism Oversight District, providing for severability conflicts in an effective date. This, too, is a public hearing, but we also have a staff presentation first, thanks.
Okay, sir, you're up again.
Yes, sir, thank you, for the record, Kenny Locke, interim manager, Building and Safety Department. On December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-three, the state of Florida will adopt the eighth edition of the Florida Building Code pursuant to chapter twenty-two-three-dash-five Rules of Florida, or Laws of Florida, I'm sorry. Uh, the district has the requirement to adopt a building code that is at least as stringent as what the state of Florida is enforcing. As such, what we are proposing at this point in time is the upgrade of all of our reference standards in our building code to match that of the Florida Building Code. And it would be adopted and enforceable on the same date, December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, that ma- makes sure that we are on par with everything that we enforce within the district, that we are no less stringent than any requirement enforced statewide.
Does that conclude your report, sir?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and, any questions? Any comments? Uh, thank you for that, that report, sir, and I believe we need to offer, is there any public comment on this resolution? Uh, hearing none, is there a motion?
Well, Mr. Chair, if I could, just one really brief comment, uh, just to underline that the changes in the Florida Building Code, I was somewhat involved in indirectly through the Florida Home Builders Association, these are important changes, good changes, but it is also important that the, uh, Epcot Building Code be the gold standard above and beyond the state requirements. So I'm happy for the.
the state requirements, so I'm happy for the, happy for the change and happy to support, so thank you.
Thank you for that comment, any other comments or questions? If not, is there a motion?
Also move.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor indicate by indicating aye.
Aye.
Let the record reflect, the motion passes unanimously. Next, is there any unfinished business or other business? Hearing none, will stand adjourned, thank you all for joining us today.